And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, approval of the agenda?
I move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Ackerman? I didn't see you and I was like, I never walked in.
Sorry, yes.
It's the poll.
The poll.
Welcome, Mr. Ackerman. What do you have for us?
Well, we have a good night, more great recognitions that we wanted to share with, uh, with everyone. One of those, um, actually, an achievement occurred just before our last regular board meeting in November, and that would be Mr. Cole Tobin. If you would join me here at the, uh, at the podium, state champion swimmer, if you stand right here. Cole, sophomore Liberty High School for the Blue Jays, so a big future ahead, already made some, some big news. Won the state championship in the 100 free over in St. Louis back in November. Other amazing finishes included a third-place finish in the 200 free at state, a runner-up finish in the 200 free relay, and a third-place finish on the 200-meter relay team as well. He was the conference champion in the 200 free, the 100 free, the 200 free relay, and the 400 free relay. School record holder in the following events: 200 medley relay, 200 free relay, and 400 free relay. Second in school history in both the 200 free and 100 free. Those amazing accomplishments already, those shared to me from their head coach, longtime head coach Chris Murphy. He actually wanted to point out that he wanted to be here tonight, but guess what he's doing? He's coaching swimming as we speak, so he sends his, uh, well wishes to everyone here tonight. Coach Murphy also noted Cole is off to a great start in his high school career, incredibly hard worker, and will not only be going for more school records, but possibly state records as well in the next two years. He's a joy to coach, and he's looking forward to seeing what he accomplishes in the next two years. So how about a big round of applause for Cole Tobin? Great to get him in here and recognize him before the break. Also wanted to make a couple of special presentations with Coach Fregon and, and Jackson want to join me here at the, at the podium. Uh, I know several of you were able to attend the, uh, how about that? That's a nice professional picture of Jackson. That's Jackson not in his football uniform. But what a week, uh, what a day it was last Tuesday from Liberty High School as Cole was presented with the prestigious Simone Award, which is presented to the best high school football player on both the Missouri and Kansas side. Coach Fregon shared with me some of his stats from the season. 342 carries, 2,717 yards, and 31 touchdowns, which quickly made me have a big wish that I would have had him on my fantasy football team this past year. But, uh, again, preps, KC All-Metro team, the top 28 players in the Metro as well, first-team All-State class six, Offensive Player of the Year in the Suburban Conference, and becoming the first-ever Simone Award for any athlete, uh, football player in Liberty Public Schools' history. So tremendous accomplishment. Jackson, I don't think this will rank up there with the actual Simone Award. There is a blue envelope. Also wanted to get Coach Chad Fregon in here as he, that same morning, was presented with the Kansas City Chiefs Eric Driscoll Kansas City Coach of the Year, which was an amazing accomplishment. Coach Fregon guided the Jays to the state semifinals last month, the first time since 1997 the Jays had been in the semifinals. And Coach Fregon, like Jackson, making history as he was the first head coach in LPS history to be named the Kansas City Chiefs Eric Driscoll Coach of the Year recipient. I can't think of a better guy to get that recognition. As I shared with him earlier, just how, what a great ambassador he is for not only Liberty High School, but Liberty Public Schools, and we hear that message, uh, all throughout the community. I actually had a chance to interview these two on In the Loop with LPS just earlier this afternoon, the premiere coming up, uh, tomorrow. So, Coach Fregon, again, I don't know if you, did anyone see Coach Fregon's award, the Coach of the Year? It was the coolest helmet, half Chiefs and half Blue Jays. It's amazing. So again, this won't measure up to that. And want to thank Dr. Mike Sharp, principal at Liberty High for being here. Jackson's mom, nice to meet you. Thanks for being here as well. Jackson, I learned is the pride of Polo Missouri. Karen, you would appreciate that.
Very close to Carrollton.
Yeah, down by Carrollton, but yeah. What a great way to wrap up our semester here in LPS with these recognitions. We're gonna have some fine arts, uh, awards to present coming up in January as we always will. But again, I hope everyone has an amazing upcoming winter break and a great start to 2025.
Thank you. Typically, we break at this point, but before we do, if anyone has a public comment card that they want to fill out or comments that they want to make to the board, there are green cards, green, blue colored cards outside the doorway. Not sure which color. And you can give it to any of us or to Ms. Aldridge. So with that said, we're gonna take 10 minutes. Oh, yes, wait a minute, stop. Thank you. For our state champions, we typically give a big standing ovation. But I also think the Simone Award deserves one as well. So for all of you present, thank you very much for all of your hard work. And Coach Fregon, that goes for you too.
He's so funny. He's so fun to talk to.
Here's place.
That's very cool.
In the unit, yeah. He used to be a paint shop.
Anna, your daughter.
She got a, like, Roscoe or?
Yeah, 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 okay.
So, we do not have any cards for our public comment, I believe, correct? Oh, before I move in on, we have a Liberty North StuCo member, Alex, correct?
Austin.
Austin, darn it. I knew I was gonna mention that. He originally came with Addy and Harrison, but they've skewed it, so thank you for staying.
Extra credit. Nice work, Austin.
Extra credit, we can email. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. Move the board approve consent agenda items 3.1 through 3.6.
Second.
Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. Reports from administration?
First item, 4.1 is our Innovation and Learning Report with Dr. Julian Moore.
This is great. I've been holding a lot of questions from the last.
Good listening. No. I'm sure. Thank you. I wanted to tonight just kind of give a little bit, since we're ending semester one, just give a little bit of, of review of just some things that we're really proud of with innovation and learning. First, we continue to host several other districts that want to come to Liberty and see all the amazing things we're doing and learn from our building principals. So I wrote down a few of the districts that have come just this semester. St. Genevieve has come twice, Parkway, Park Hill, Kingsville, Clayton, and West Platte. So we're really proud of that, that they, um, a couple, there was one other, I think Kingsville, that maybe has come twice as well. But they come and they learn, and we're really excited that they want to see the great things we're doing. I also wanted to share, um, as you all know, that this is the first year that the market value assets will be a graduation requirement. We have now, um, worked up to 30 courses at the high school level with embedded market value assets. 21 of those have client-connected projects embedded in the course curriculum, and then nine of those courses have a work experience or an internship as part of them. So right now in grades nine through 12, we have 1,450 enrollments, not necessarily students, but enrollments, because a student could have two, in classes with a market value asset embedded in it. So we're really proud of that. Our Career Navigators have done a great job. As you know, we added, um, the third, who is focused on, um, Kristen Nguyen did that a few years ago, and then April Fleming has taken that over, and they've done a great job of adding, working with teachers to add those in and make them a yearly project. And then finally on that, we had a couple of, with a couple of seniors who were graduating at semester who did not have a market value asset. So we're actually working with those students to work on a portfolio project, so they actually have something to take with them when they leave. And then today, we had a principals meeting, and we were able to reflect on the semester, and we talked about our professional learning communities, and I asked them to just come up with like a, a play on movies to describe their semester so far. And two that I loved that came up were, instead of Die Hard, Thrive Hard. And then the other one, which is my favorite, was Miracle on Mill Street. And so Franklin had quite a few things to celebrate this year with their panorama data and some of the work they've done as a professional learning community, so I just love that. And then, um, most recently, I had notes about Miss Simone and Coach Fregon, so obviously, congratulations to them. And then also, another piece of history that was made is we had two fifth graders who made the All-State Choir and will perform at MMEA in January. And that is a student from Shool Creek and a student from Kelly Brook. So I just wanted to share all of that from this past semester, and I'll take any questions that you may have.
Can you give me an example of the embedded MBA? Like what that class, one of, one of those might be and what that might look like?
Sure. Um, that would be possibly the Pro Start class. And so with Pro Start, obviously, they're cooking and they're doing different things, but they also do projects along the way, so they've always done that. And then when we got to have market value assets, we worked with Wendy Turner to say they would also have to have this many more hours toward helping a client, um, in that, in that class, you know, outside. So they did stuff like the foundation, they did the little charcuterie, um, boxes. Sports marketing is one. Obviously, they have to put in so many hours with that. I'm trying to think.
You have some certifications as well that come with like the Pro Start Technical Theater, some of the other pieces, so it can be that client-connected project, but it may also be a tangible certification that then you can take with you. Think Career Center, Career Center does a lot of that. We have several courses at the high school level that have that embedded in it as well.
Child development would be another one, so, um, at the ECC, they talked about that this past week, where, um, instead of using Early Bird, they, they go to the ECC and they work with those students. So they do so many hours and projects with them, but that counts.
So when a student signs up for classes, like in the next couple months for next year, does it say something like this class?
It does.
Okay.
It does, and so they, in school links now in our course catalog, it all will say this class has an embedded MBA. Um, and then the other piece that we're kind of working on with that is making sure that the course syllabus, so I would say probably maybe half of those have it in the syllabus of what you have to complete in order to get the MBA, right? You can't just be in a class and get it. You have to do certain, um, additional work. And so the, we're working to make sure that every course syllabus has the expectations lined out as well. But yes, within the, um... But yes, within the, um, within the, the.
School links.
School links for each class, the description, it'll say that there's an embedded MBA.
So, you mentioned that two students were graduating who were, you're working, picking up the market value asset. How many students total were graduating that semester?
Semester.
Um, that's a good question, I don't know off the top of my head, I mean, I don't think it's.
I know we're, we talked previous years, is this a growing thing? Do you feel like it continues to grow?
No, I don't think it's been growing, I mean, I definitely think we have a lot of students, especially maybe students like Jackson who are gonna go to, you know, school, and then colleges want them to come a semester early and start working, so you have someone like an Abigail Mullen who's going to USC, she's, you know, gonna go out and do that. Um, I think that's what most of the students are, but there's definitely a handful at both schools.
And we should, we should be tracking that.
Yeah, for sure, we can get you the numbers.
Share that with the board, so, yeah.
I just wanted to shout out the, the library team. I loved seeing the focus on media literacy. Like, I've been getting emails as a parent about the, the efforts to, like through quizzes or, or just even to get students into the library with the, at the high school level with the trivia games, Harry Potter trivia, I, anything to get, get students into the library. I just find their displays to be so creative and the, there's just a, I feel like a lot of effort, like from what, from what I'm seeing, that to, to focus on that media literacy piece, which I think is critical these days.
Thank you, I will share that. That was one of the, actually Clayton, who's, um, coming right after break, they said, we want to see, we've heard a lot about your library program, so we want to see some of that, so that was a nice compliment.
I, I know that we, uh, you all do a follow-up related to what students are doing once they graduate from high school, I know there's an effort to do that. Is there a plan, like with the MBAs, to see how that makes a difference out there? Is that something that might be part of the plan?
Yes, so actually, we just, um, had a call with School Links to try to do some follow-up with that, to see how, how it's beneficial. And like, did it help them with the skill building? Are they using, you know, did they, they did an internship, are they in that same, looking at that same career path? Um, and they said they can do some of that for us, through School Links, so we're excited about that.
Yes, thank you.
Other questions of Dr. Moore? Okay, thanks, Dr. Moore. Uh, next up then, 4.2, Student Equity and Access Report, Dr. Dixon Sehorn.
Good evening. Wanted to first bring your attention to the annual report and review for the Department of Student Equity and Access that is included, uh, in this month's, uh, report. Uh, also wanted to call your attention to Liberty Alliance for Youth, Laffy. Uh, they recently hosted a student leadership summit on Thursday, December the 5th. In partnership with Laffy, our high school fresh clubs, for clarification, fresh stands for Finding Reasons to Exercise Safe Habits. They led sessions for middle school fresh clubs to learn about resilience and positive coping strategies and plan for future student activities within the building. So, this is always an exciting opportunity for youth leadership around, uh, social emotional wellness and support, uh, peer-to-peer support, so we're very happy about that event. Also wanted to share that our, uh, district transfer team, so this is led by Rebecca Brestman in Student Services, and she has a team of people that she works with, directors and, uh, school leaders, those that have volunteered to be a part of that effort, and they've been in the process of reviewing and then also revising some district guidelines and criteria as we gear up for our student transfer request process, and that will ensue very soon, uh, as we get ready for the 25, 26 school year. With respect to special programs, in partnership with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas City, and I believe this is also referenced in Sarah's report as well, but on December the 12th, our LPS counselors and school, uh, social workers participated in a youth mental health first aid training session. I was able to be in attendance, I also want to publicly thank Jen Bauer, she was there as well, and it's designed to teach parents and family members, caregiver, caregivers, teachers, school staff, uh, how to, uh, really support adolescents, that age group of 12 to 18, who are experiencing some mental health, uh, or addiction challenges, or just in crisis in general. So, that course introduced some common mental health challenges that our youth are experiencing, reviewed typical adolescent development, and also provided some, uh, action steps for how to help young people when they're in a crisis, but then also when they're in a non-crisis situation. And the topics that were addressed included anxiety, depression, substance use disorders in which psychosis may occur, disruptive behavior disorders, including ADHD and eating disorders. So, it was a very, very, very powerful session, and, uh, again, I was just very thankful to those, uh, counselors and social workers that were able to be in attendance. Also, we will have National School Counseling Week coming up in February. You will or should have received, uh, an invitation to that event, so the school counseling team will be hosting a coffee and conversations with LPS counselors that will be on February the 4th, immediately following our board study session, will be held at Liberty High School in the Black Box. And invitations have also gone out to all of our district leadership team as well. So, those are the highlights that I wanted to share this evening, I'll gladly take any questions at this time.
I don't have a question, but I'd like to shout out, Austin is also one of our fresh club leaders at Liberty North, and he led the student leadership summit.
Other comments or questions of Dr. Dixon Sehorn? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, 4.3 is our finance report, and you will notice a vacant chair because we sent Ms. Cindy Sullivan to her grand kiddo's Christmas concert.
Good.
So, she reluctantly said okay, uh, but she did leave me with a couple of items that I wanted to share briefly as far as her finance update. Um, she wanted to make mention that the Business Services Annual Report is included in your packet, um, and be sure to ask any questions or follow-up with her if you have any questions or concerns. Uh, we also received our county tax settlement yesterday, um, as far as this time of year with assessed valuation payments. Early collections are actually stronger than what we've seen in years past, um, and looking at this year, we received $4.2 million so far, and then the average over the last three years was closer to $3 million. And so you'll see that trickle in December typically, and then January, February, by the time you hit March, the majority of collections, um, have taken place, but wanted to mention that. As we turn the page on the 2025 calendar, Team Liberty will be working over the course of the next several months on center, uh, salary and benefit projections, as well as a variety of revenue scenarios, um, and she wanted to make sure and include this, based on the limited information we have, um, as that progresses over the course of the legislative session, and DESI, um, kind of makes their various calculations as far as funding for the following year. Their next meeting then is scheduled for Thursday, January 16th, and again, appreciate the board for their participation in Team Liberty. Uh, last couple of things she mentioned was the Audit and Finance Committee reviewed, uh, this month's financial reports, had nothing to share, nothing to report, and then lastly, she wanted to wish, uh, safe and happy holidays to everyone. So, if you have any questions, if it's not on this page, I don't know that I can help, but I do know that she would be receptive to any questions, especially around the Business Services Annual Report, so take a look at that. Okay?
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Anderson, 4.4, our Operations Report.
Good evening, um, just a couple of things to report, uh, on, uh, and both of these are, uh, projects that our teams do each and every year, um, that were highlighted. The purchasing and distribution crew were Liberty Community Christmas tree, uh, where they kind of get involved in transporting everything over to Heritage Hall, and I think as Jason mentioned, he had over 600 boxes of canned goods and a thousand rolls of, of paper towels, and just his team enjoys doing that each year, and they've been doing it, gosh, I don't even know, I think last time, it's been like 20 years. Uh, and also Kids Zone, they've done for the last several years, a service project, uh, and they engaged the students and kind of pulled them what they want to do, they wanted to contribute to, um, a pet rescue, or a pet resource project, so all 11 sites contributed, 360 items were collected, and they were able to kind of deliver those out to that, that organization, uh, which they all enjoyed that very much. Um, other than that, bond update, everything's going really well, uh, we've, uh, kept that pretty current in that report, and we are targeting kind of probably a February timeframe to get back out for a walk-through of some of the sites. We have, uh, pretty much finished up the 100 over there at, uh, Liberty High School and Heritage, uh, the first phase is, is wrapped, pretty much wrapped up. Uh, if you're in those buildings, you know, certainly feel free to kind of take a peek. Uh, we're, we're out there recently, they both are pretty, pretty great, it's just good seeing them wrapping up. Um, but, uh, other than that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
So, we've got Heritage, we've got the Liberty High School, and Epic kind of is the other one that would have come in online, are they gonna come online when they return after the holidays, or will it be a transition once they're back sometime in January?
Liberty High and Heritage are gonna be already outfitted, furnished, uh, come January, what is it, five, I don't even know, when do, when do everybody go back to school?
Six, I think.
You think I know that?
I think it's the six.
It'll, it'll be ready for then. Epic, they're, I think it's through into February, um, before they can turn that one loose. Um, and that one, when you're there, you can tell that they still got some work to do, but it's coming together pretty quickly.
Okay. And so at Heritage, there won't be anything, uh, with the contractor then until summer?
Summer, other than maybe doing some, just, you know, fine kind of punch list items. But yeah, I think they'll be out of the way, um, until summer. We've had some conversations if we could get a jumpstart on that work, so as not to be too disruptive. If we can get anything done prior to the start of school in '25, if we can jumpstart that work, we might do that, so we've been in some conversations. Uh, but those bids won't come through until, um, January, so we'll know more then.
Okay.
All right, if you don't know the answer off the top of your head, that's fine. Um, I was looking at the bus purchases and noted they all had air conditioning, and it feels like, I, I think I remember an earlier, maybe you had asked about it, or you had about, do all of our buses have air conditioning at this point, or are we slowly replacing them with air condition? Is that kind of the, the priority or one of our priorities as we replace and upgrade our fleet over at the time?
Yeah, all, all new ones do.
Okay.
That's just automatic part of the standard package, uh, and as we continue to replace them, so the ones that are coming offline, most of them are not air-conditioned. Uh, I couldn't tell you how long before we kind of cycle through.
Okay.
Uh, but yeah, everything new is, uh, has AC.
But she said most are not still at this point?
You know, I'd have to, I wonder if we're over that halfway point, let me check and I'll send a note to the board, but yeah.
Anything else for Mr. Anderson? Thank you.
Thanks.
4.5 then, our Human Resources Report, Dr. Sarah Marion.
Good evening. Just a few updates for you. Um, this coming semester on January 1st, we will launch a new, um, contract with Kira Link, will be our employee assistance program provider, and so that will provide, one of the features will be counseling services of four visits for staff members, so we're excited to launch that new program, and we'll send out promotional materials to all of our employees, um, as we get a little bit closer to that date. Um, the early notification incentive program, uh, today, as of today, we have 16 employees that are participating in that, which is up from the past year, in which we had seven last year at this time and 12 the year prior. So, we anticipate to continue to receive an additional few retirement notifications as we progress through the year. Um, and then our Grow Your Own Teachers Program for the 25, 26 school year is launching, we're accepting applications for that program right now. Um, during the week of February 10th through the 13th, we'll do some assistance with students on-site, and then, um, applications are gonna be accepted through February the 18th. And then I just wanted to share some recruiting numbers, we continue to, um, do an excellent job in, in collaborating with our operations team members as well, to make sure that we're filling all those open vacancies. So, while we have 25 vacancies, that continues to be very low for Liberty Public School District, and so we have some upcoming in-person recruitment events, and so our team works very diligently to make sure that our presence is known across the community, and continuing with that focus. Take any questions?
Well, I already told you this, but I was super impressed at Holiday Mart on Saturday, the transportation had a booth set up, and they were talking to all kinds of people as they were walking by, including me, and so I thought that was a really great opportunity. I got a bag. Uh, I mean, they didn't know who I was, she didn't know who I was, so it was just kind of fun to be like, hey, what are you doing, what are you up to? And then I was just kind of walking down the hall, and so, they were just talking to everybody, so that was, that was good. Good opportunity in the building with people in the community.
Can you drive a bus?
Yes. Not yet, but I might learn.
I know sometimes there's questions about the early notice incentive plans, um, or programs. I think it seems like such a benefit to know who, what positions are being in the bill, I just wanted to ask, I mean, is that something that we're still seeing the benefit of having that as an incentive, so we get those positions filled more quickly? I'm assuming it is, but I just thought I'd ask.
I think anytime that we can have that early notification and fill those applic, and fill that pool early is a benefit, because we're finding that, um, school districts are needing to recruit earlier and earlier in the current calendar year for the next calendar year in order to secure candidates, as they are getting jobs quicker, um, since there's fewer candidates and more positions, I anticipate. So, I think that will be a continued benefit.
What other questions of Dr. Marion? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, last item then would be the Superintendent's Report, hit on a couple of things. Um, as you'll recall, we held our Board Candidate Workshop on November 19th, and filing for board candidacy opened on December 10th and runs through December 31st at the close of Business Day at 5:00. Uh, might mention that that's New Year's Eve, so thanks to our team, um, that will be present on that day as the board filing window closes. Uh, we do have two thus far that have signed up, and those are our incumbents, uh, in this order, Karen Rogers and Dan Currents. Um, so again, we'll just mention that that window remains open through the end of the month. Couple of things to highlight in my report, um, as we do every month, we talk about our strategic plan, our vivid vision, and our graduate profile, uh, but if you followed along, you'll note that we've incorporated the Continuous Improvement Framework through Success Ready Students Network, along with MSIP 6, and continuing to kind of have our feet in both camps, um, whether it's Success Ready Students Network or the work with DESI. Um, something that happens this time of year is our annual items not waived checklist that DESI pushes to every district, that then they have to adhere to and show that, yes, they have all these pieces in place. Um, from statutory requirements to the number of instructional hours tied to a calendar, um, the assessments that are utilized, teacher credentialing or certification, um, some financial accountability areas, things related to student health and wellness, as well as, uh, safety of our schools and campuses. Um, so we're in the process of completing that, appreciate Nikki Truster for helping coordinate that. We've also mentioned strategic planning as it relates to real-world learning, uh, through our partnership there, um, in partnership with the Ewing Marion Kaufman Foundation, that strategic plan is finalized. I wanted to hit on one piece, and that's just that reminder that that market value asset attainment goal by 2030 is that all students in the Kansas City metro area, it's a six-county region, over 100,000 high school students, receive at least one market value asset. And so we're well on our way, uh, well on our way there, but that is a pretty significant lift, uh, for school systems, but then also cannot happen without the partnership that we see through our business community. There's four key areas within the strategic plan, uh, systems transformation, which speaks to the schoolhouse or the school level, this notion of community ecosystems, student-centered learning, or learner-centered education, as we would call it in Liberty, and then also growing and building capacity through a significant amount of professional learning. So, appreciate our team, from our high school principals, to our teachers, to our administrators, um, that continue to engage in that regard. To take that another step further, something we're working toward would be, what does a pre-experience look like? So, for example, at the middle level or the elementary level. And so you have a couple of examples of programs that are similarly structured, so if you're an IB school or taking an AP course, you may have pre-IB, you may have pre-MP, right? That then scaffolds up to that, uh, course experience at the high school level. Another good example would be Launch, um, which is our elementary-level Project Lead the Way course offerings that are offered to our elementary kiddos, then they take additional PLTW courses at the secondary level, starting in middle school, and then have access at the high school level to a full slate of course offerings. So, with those couple of examples, how might we be able to create some pre-real-world learning experiences or pre-MBA experiences, but don't necessarily qualify for that final requirement at graduation, but gets kids thinking about their journey and their path beyond high school? school. So we're excited about working on that. Last thing that I would share would just be our ongoing professional learning experiences that are provided through Innovation and Learning for our staff, but then also through our network and groups that we're connected with. Wanted to mention specifically an upcoming cadre of master teachers that are tied to the Success Ready Students Network, specifically around growing and building personalized competency-based learning. Each of the districts that are part of Success Ready Students Network will be able to identify one master teacher to help and participate in this state-level collaboration. So we're excited to be able to pursue that, and we'll share more information at whatever point that decision is made. Lastly, I would hope that everyone can enjoy the holidays and unpack a little bit, recharge, and certainly welcome you all back in January for the start of a new, new calendar year. So with that said, would open it up for any questions you all have of me.
I know you said this is new. What would a master teacher look like in your mind?
Yeah, so then what we've got in mind is a staff person, we can't divulge that just yet, but a teacher who has worked very closely in integrating and supporting competency-based learning. And so then what that would allow that person to do would be to go to training, develop professionally, but then certainly come back and share. And so that's really what we're talking about. The other piece to it is not only are we supporting that person's learning and our district's growth, but then our contribution to other districts as well. So it's really two-way, it's twofold. Their learning and our benefit, but then also our, our opportunity to collaborate and share, which we always do. So it's just another layer that gets down to that classroom level, that teacher and that building level, to be able to support the professional collaboration.
And so this person would also potentially appear in professional development for other districts?
Yeah.
That's the idea, too. So that's good.
Yeah, potentially. We'll keep you informed along the way.
You mentioned the, the market value asset and the goal of 2030. I mean, compared to where we're at, that seems pretty low. Are there other districts that you feel are tracking more on a pace that we're at?
It's interesting, because as much as we try to get everybody on the same page in how we define a market value asset, we've had to reconcile some of that from district to district to district. So there are some that are well below that. There are some that, right out of the gate, said, oh yeah, we're close to ninety-five percent. But then as they started looking at the definition, realized, okay, yeah, no, we're closer to sixty percent. And so the calibration is key. And I think at the end of the day, you still may see some variance from district to district to district. Most notable would be like the state of Kansas, and that they have a variation of real-world learning embedded in their state accreditation and assessment accountability practices that is a little more loose than how we rigidly define a market value asset. And so in, in their terms, they meet it. In Kaufman's Kansas City area collaborative, it may be, they may not meet it, if that makes sense. In Missouri, we don't have that coming from our state level yet. So I think those districts that are on the Missouri side are pretty tight on those MBA definitions. So, good question.
I mean, I guess I feel like your community plays a huge role in your ability to offer MBAs to your students. So do smaller communities struggle with that?
Keep in mind, right now it's metro, right?
Right, yes.
In, in Kansas, for example, I think they, you obviously have to leverage your local context. So if you're in rural Kansas, it might look a lot different. You may have some conservation, you may have some agriculture, you may have some energy, right, as far as energy fields and industries and so forth. You think about a local community, regardless of whether it's rural Kansas or rural Missouri, you typically have an attorney, you've got a city council, city government, you have a school district that has all of those respective departments within it. You know, you probably have an attorney, you have the health clinic, you have county offices. You have to get a little more creative if you don't have access like what we have here in the metro area. The thing that is most notable is for us, we struggle in our districts to have access to minority-owned businesses. And so how do we grow that, so that we have students who see themselves in those mentors or those coaches that they're working with? Now, we have some, but we probably don't have the extent that we would like to have, to ensure that our kiddos see themselves in the work, if that makes sense.
Is that just a lack of, of those in the community, or is that like?
Locally, yeah. If you, you have to go south to find it, or north Kansas City area to find it. And, you know, leveraging our parents and our families that we know of that would be willing to, you know, open their employment doors, so to speak.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So is that MBA calibration something that's part of the Success Ready Student Network? Would, would that network calibrate that also?
So the work in the Kansas City districts are already further ahead, having done all of that. And so then what Success Ready Students Network is doing is learning from the Kansas City districts. And it will look similar, but it may also look a little different, because they're trying to wrap their heads around, okay, how does this work in my school district?
Right.
If I'm in Buffalo, Missouri, right?
Yeah.
In a smaller context and community. So that's where we've tried to stay true to the definitions that are used here in the Kansas City area. And so far, that's what's stuck, because there really are no other definitions. So when you see a lot of the Success Ready Student Network's material, a lot of it is mirrored, mirroring what happens, what's going on here in Kansas City area. So, in that regard, we're a little bit ahead. But then we're also trying to grow that in the St. Louis area, in the southwest area, the Boot Hill, where they may not have a convenor like a Kaufman Foundation to come and help support the work. So, okay. Great questions. We do have a couple of items we wanted to bring back for you, the first of which is our twenty-five, twenty-six academic calendars. You have two documents that were uploaded earlier this semester, last month. Again, appreciate the work of Team Liberty, Dr. Marriott, Ms. Sullivan, as far as their help this fall, and all of the members of Team Liberty in getting us to this point. So a couple of highlights for the Liberty Public School District twenty-five, twenty-six calendar. First day of school slated for August twentieth, the end of the first semester, being December nineteenth, winter vacation happening from December twenty-second through January second. January fifth being a teacher workday, school beginning the following day. And then fast forward to spring break, you'll note that is a little bit later in the school year. Spring break slated for March thirtieth through April third. And then the last day of school being May twenty-second, as far as the calendar, getting us to a total of student contact days of one hundred and seventy-three, teacher contract days of one hundred and eighty-six. The second calendar then that you have presented is for Epic Elementary, and there are some parallels to the district's calendar. Most notably, though, their start is on August sixth, as far as their first day. Same end of the first semester, same winter vacation, teacher workday in January, spring break matches up. And then, as you know, they have a later finish, which actually falls a little bit earlier in the month of June, but their last day of school would be June sixth. Their total number of contact days differs a little bit, one hundred and eighty-nine total. And what you see on the calendar is one seventy-one and eighteen. One hundred and seventy-one would be the regular school year. The eighteen, for what it's worth, is us being able to leverage some summer school period because of the start in August. So that's why that eighteen appears there. And then contract days, closer to two hundred and five, of course, our staff are remunerated accordingly for those that work at Epic Elementary. So would present that to you this evening for your consideration. The only other thing I would share is that not only do we receive feedback, and we surveyed this year with Team Liberty, but we also try to collaborate and have a sense of what area districts are doing as it relates to our career centers, as well as Northern CAPS calendar, and trying to ensure that we have a semblance of what's happening across the area. Anything to add to that, Dr. Marriott?
(inaudible) Well, other than they had great discussions, and thank you guys for your participation.
So we'll just present that to you for action this evening.
I move the board adopt the twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-six academic calendars.
Second.
Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item then under unfinished business, five point two, is our legislative priorities. And we have spent a considerable amount of time this fall on this, whether it's at our study sessions or at our regular monthly meetings. And so we have made some changes, as you all indicated, over the course of the last couple of months, but you have that in its final form, presented to you this evening for your consideration. The only piece that we will then work on with Ms. Reed would be our letter to legislators. And so we'll craft that, be sure and share that with you all. But then pending your approval this evening, that will get sent to our area legislators in early January. So would present that to you for your consideration.
I move the board adopt the twenty-two legislative priorities as revised.
Second. Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries. New business.
We do have one item under new business, and that is our contracts and purchases category. So we'll turn it over to Mr. Anderson to walk us through that.
Thank you. And just real quick, this is often something in the past we've had under consent, but it's just kind of budgeted, it's part of what we do, but since it's such a large purchase, we wanted to draw it out tonight. Really, it's just for the purchase of thirteen new school buses. As was mentioned in the Friday update, this takes, there's such lead time on this, and it's getting worse and worse. So this is really, it's gonna take a while before they come into the fleet, so we wanted to add soon. And then also, as mentioned, it's, it's, I think, most likely that we'll follow this up, once they're ready for delivery, to prepare a lease purchase agreement to present to you all, so we can spread those payments out over time. And we've done that often in the past as well. So it's, takes a little bit of a load off the capital plan. So there's a breakdown of the types of buses. It's a combination of some diesel, some propane, some regular gas, some sped buses, some conventional buses. It's a proper mix to kind of support kind of the various needs of the program. But we appreciate approval tonight, so we can get that in queue for production.
All air-conditioned?
All air-conditioned.
And will we be taking thirteen out of service?
Most likely.
Is it a one-for-one?
They'll evaluate. I think right now we have the proper number of spare buses, so my guess is some of these thirteen will kick out some of the, the spare buses right now that aren't in great shape. But they have a process for evaluating that, and we sell the rest of them as part of the Gov. Deals program.
And even though, I guess you said that by getting this approved, you can start the process, taking delivery at this point, do you know what their lead time is? Is this a?
I thought it was like eight months or something.
Yeah, I had it, what did I write in there? Sorry. Yeah, I think it suits eight months. Yes. And just from experience, I know that's gotten, in some of these contracts, I'm not saying the specific vendor, but it's gotten
Right.
More vague in some instances. So I mean, from the lead time standpoint, it is taking more time.
How does that affect our fiscal year?
So we work really closely with Cindy, who's great, kind of helping us kind of flex into that from time to time. And if we spill into the next year, we just kind of offset that a little bit.
Okay.
But we're very much tuned in to, especially with something like this, where you just don't know if it's
Right.
I mean, those eight months can be fourteen months. So we'll just do our best to monitor that.
The other thing you have to keep in mind, amortization schedules, in which some roll off while others roll on, right? The lease purchase mention, we'll have that for those thirteen buses for a period, and then they'll roll off eventually. So I know that plays out from a budget standpoint.
Steve, I know it's probably infrastructure-related, but I'm looking at propane, diesel, gas. So is it because of the infrastructure we don't, couldn't support? What would be your first choice if you decided what kind of fuel to go with?
Well, you know, I think the diversification's really, I think, helpful for us. Propane's been a very productive program for us. We were one of the first ones out of the gate with the propane. So we have all the infrastructure on site for propane and for diesel. Gas is not. Gas is, we've been doing more gas. I think that's been helpful for in-town trips.
Okay.
With diesel, ones are obviously the heartier ones that we have to maintain
Yeah.
Within the fleet right now. But so I think it's a good kind of diversification, and I like that they continue to mix it up.
Okay.
I move the board approve the Central States Bus Sales Purchase of thirteen new air-conditioned school buses.
Second. Nicely done.
Nice.
Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. So legislation and advocacy, does anybody have anything? I mean, obviously, we've got the letter that's gonna go to legislators. There are several dates in the next, in the new year, where there are advocacy days. MSBA is doing one in March, and
Greater Kansas City?
Thank you. GCSC KC is doing one in February. So think about that. Also, we already talked about board candidate filing. COSPA and NSBA have annual conferences. If anyone is interested in doing that, please talk to Denise. Those are coming up dates. Denise, do you know the date for either one?
I know NSBA, or the, that one's the first weekend of April, 'cause
They're in here, but A, COSPA's March twenty-one through twenty-three, and NSBA's April four through six.
So if you're interested in attending either one of those, and then Election Day is the eighth of April coming up. Then Denise has all of our board meetings through June. Very good. Any board remarks?
Is there, did we discuss having, convening some type of gathering with our local legislators?
That's what I was gonna ask.
We've kicked it around. Keep in mind, we, especially, we have some new folks.
Right.
I think earlier, after the election in November, a lot of time is spent on waiting those freshmen. And so as we've had some conversations with them, it's difficult to pin anything down. I think once we get into the calendar year, the new calendar year, Fridays tend to work best when they're back in town. The other piece, you have a lot of these area gatherings, whether it's Northland Regional Chamber or Clay County, where they'll do like a legislative breakfast. We participate in many of those. We could certainly do something local. The thing I would love to do is, is connect it with like a site visit. So we've talked about perhaps extending one of our dates in the spring semester and inviting legislators to be there as well, to be able to get into our schools. Again, because many of them will be new, or a couple of them will be new. So. One other thing to make note of is each year, we usually have cooperating school districts dinner. I think that's usually at an elementary school in Blue Springs. The name escapes me.
Delta Woods.
Thank you, Delta Woods. That's the one. They have decided to hit the pause button on that for this next spring semester, in terms of kind of rethinking their approach. In part, the advocacy day later in February. I think that may have run its course as far as the dinner was becoming pretty sparse as far as legislators actually attending it. So always looking for new ideas, so.
I appreciate them reconsidering how they approach that. I think it's, it's pretty novel.
I can pass that along.
Yeah. I would say happy holidays to everyone, and
Yes.
The millions watching on TV.
Happy, successful, almost end of the first semester, and thanks for everybody's work, and hope everybody has a great break.
Enjoy, enjoy the time with your families.
I move the board adjourn.
Second.
Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew? Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries.